Good morning.
Good morning.
Second time around. Good morning. I would like to call to order the Pasco Board of County Commission 10 o'clock meeting of June 3, 2025. At this time, silence all electronic devices and mute your phones. Please rise to the invocation pledge of allegiance.
My honor to give the invocation, Chaplain Anthony Shite, Pasco County Fire Rescue. Let us pray. Sovereign and eternal God, we thank you for this, our civic business today. We ask that you'll grant leadership and skill to our commission today. Thank you for our community, our firefighters, policemen, teachers, and our children in our community. Grant us blessing for our community, and we thank you for our blessing. Amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance is to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as one.
Madam clerk, please call the roll.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Here.
District 4, Commissioner Jaeger.
Here.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Excuse.
She's online, looks like.
Oh, she's online? Okay.
She's just muted.
All right, Commissioner Starkey, see you. Thank you. Now's the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board and on other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then, we will take public comment from those who are pre-registered at WebEx Link and currently on cue. We request that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a commission or a team member, but rather directed at issues. This provides mutual respect between the board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. A green light will be shown on the podium. After two minutes, a yellow light will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, a red light will be displayed, three beeps will sound, and you will close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Madam clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do, Mr. Chair. We have Joseph Bolick, if you could please step up to the podium, and then followed by Allison Moore, and there's a couple more.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Bolick. I live at 31826 Pasco Road in San Antonio. I'd like to address the Marion Lane subdivision issue. Marion Lane is a dirt road maintained by the residents, and it crosses a stream, the all-metal culvert. There is, this culvert does not support any type of contractor or sanitation companies. Reason this is important is that a contractor is thinking about building a subdivision in the Marion Lane. During the rainy season, this often floods because, have a photo of the flood. That's Marion Lane during the rainy season, okay? Also, if you consider the fact that Marion Lane is a privately owned dirt road, once the subdivision is installed, it now becomes under a different category according to the county code. Thus, it's got to meet those county standards as per paragraph 901.6. It's not 26 feet wide, doesn't have 2 and 1/2 inches of concrete, does not have a minimum clearance of 4 feet. The culvert does not meet the standards. Also, it's in table 901.6 Alpha, must have two through lanes with cul-de-sac. Finally, has to have a turnabout. As indicated in the arrows above, the culvert often floods. This is the culvert, this is taken several weeks ago, at the end of the dry season. As you can see, it's almost getting ready to cover the road again. There's another photo here of the same creek as it goes over Pasco Road. Quite a bit of difference in the way it's built. This property was normally used for cattle grazing with little rain or other runoff. The property slopes down to a stream. The subdivision requires some type of a pond to prevent this. The design of the subdivision is not made in requirement 700.6, considering the soil conditions. I would say due to the conditions of the road, residents must transport garbage to the intersection of Marion Lane. Got to have the picture of the garbage. This belongs, this corner belongs to Mr. Bobo, and he is not very enthusiastic about having more individuals put their garbage on his land. Finally, as I look at this, I believe if it is approved, then the county should ensure that the building meets all the standards of the road, bridge, and retention pond. I also believe it should be required to maintain the road for a minimum of 10 years, or new residents be advised in requirement any sales. A review of 506.6 states that each lot must be 1 acre. If you put in roads, if you put in cul-de-sacs, if you put in other things, there's only about 3 and 1/2 acres left, okay? Mean, rather than approving 5 lots, all you should leave is 3 lots.
Thank you, sir.
Next up is Allison Moore, followed by Carrie Hyzer.
Good morning. I'm Allison. I live on Marion Lane in San Antonio. I've been here before in front of you guys about the same issue. I've met with Commissioner Oakley about it, but I'm here again to, you know, beg the board to look closer at the project and the access that's used to get to it. Myself and my neighbors, oh, I actually have some papers that I'm supposed to...
Move to receive and file.
Give to someone.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. You can bring them to the clerk.
I'm sorry. Myself and my neighbors, we live in a deed-restricted community that this access runs right through the middle of, on a private road that we pay to maintain and to have access to our properties. We believe that the increase in traffic will overburden the easement with no, like, plan as to how it's going to be maintained. As of it is now, it's like a good neighbor situation, like, hey, will you pay? Will you pay? You know, it's already a challenge. Can you imagine we're adding five more homes or four more homes to it to try to get people to, you know, do anything? Not to mention with the increase in traffic, it honestly needs to be improved. Like, these are the 20 neighbors that I had against the project, but I also have pictures, again, of the flood that Mr. Bolick put up there on the culvert. The culvert is supposed to be taken care of by swift mud. Go to the other one, the dry one. It's only 9 foot wide, which is just wide enough for the car. Not two cars can pass on it, so it bottlenecks there. And with just the couple of people that use it now, I can't even imagine what it's going to be like with, you know, 50, 60, however many more passes the county has deemed to pass on the culvert every day. You know, we've, I've been arguing with the county since the planning stage of this, and no one has been able to give me any feedback that makes sense. You know, it's a civil matter. Yeah, it's a civil matter that now we're going to have to spend tens of thousands of dollars to try to address. I feel like if you're going to make a project, you should have to address the access to the project, you know? So that's my frustration. And my neighbor's frustration is, like, even if he has future land use codes, you know, it has to make sense how you get there. And you're getting there traversing over our property, our easement that we pay for, we maintain, that really, logistically, is a unique situation. I have actually a paper in there that is the traffic analysis that the developer supposedly did. No?
Yeah, I can just give it to her.
Can we get those pictures to Gina?
It's one of the most important ones, actually. It says on there that there's no unique traffic safety issues on the road, which I don't know who determined that, but there obviously is issues with safety and traffic on the road. It's that second page of that right there. I've started as well.
You want me to show the rest of the pictures, too?
Yeah. The other ones talk about the swift mud factor, that there should have been some kind of petition to swift mud because you're crossing over their watershed with the culvert that's not adequate. There's major, you know, logistical issues that have not been addressed by the county. I don't even think the county has come out to even look at it. They look at it on a map and say, oh, look, there's a road. Well, I mean, there is, but there isn't, you know? It's, it's not a very nice road. No, that one was already done by Mr. Bolick. I'm talking about the one that talks about the traffic analysis. It was on the top, the second one to that. Yep, there's two of them. Yep, right there, that one with the big star on it. Yep. So right here, he submitted this that says, describe any unique traffic safety issues with access, and he says there's none. That's not true. Like, there's definitely, and I've been screaming about it for probably three years now, that there's definite safety traffic issues with accessing the property. And again, you know, I don't know where this came from. I don't know who did this. This is something I think that he submitted, because whenever I talked to the county, they said, we don't know anything about the road. It's a private road, you know, like, that's your problem. Which I guess I get, but at the same time, you know, the county keeps saying, oh, it's a civil matter, and I keep telling them, you're creating the civil matter because you're not addressing the problem with foresight. You know, you're saying, oh, too bad, y'all figure it out, but we're going to approve something that's causing the go-figure-it-out, if it makes sense. And that's frustrating for us, you know, when we've literally been complaining since the planning stage with no avail, and now here we are, still being told, like, nothing we can do, too bad, you know? Go hire an attorney and work it out yourself, when, like I said, the county's causing the problem. So, I mean, I just feel like that if you guys do your due diligence, then, you know, we won't have this problem.
Okay. Thank you.
We have Carrie Leavitt-Hyzer, followed by Nancy Hazelwood, followed by Cindy Buckle.
Good morning. So my husband and I own the property at 12505 Marion Lane, and it's a 20-acre parcel on one side, and the other side of our driveway is the 5-acre parcel owned by VJ Mariella, who, and that's the man attempting to subdivide the 5 acres. And we're here, obviously, to request that that would get denied for two reasons. So the first reason is, as the neighbors have discussed, Marion Lane is actually a private road, it's not county-maintained. And then, once you get to, right before the culvert, I think it is, that's flooded and not properly maintained and not able to hold a lot of vehicles and large vehicles, then that starts the private easement, which is my husband and my private driveway. And we just think that it would be unnecessary, increased traffic and congestion on the whole road, including our private easement. So there's two easements. I just want to make sure that is getting conveyed. There's the Marion Lane easement, and then there's the easement with myself, my husband, and Mr. Mariella. There's going to be additional wear and tear on our private easement, resulting in higher maintenance costs. There's structural limitations on the culvert for the creek. It's already at capacity, it's not in great shape. So now, if we're going to add in construction vehicles and four more families, it's really, it's not a good situation. And just to show you some of the financial strain that it's put on my husband and me, the people that already live, the tenants at 12502 Marion Lane, they have broken the, our mule gate. It has a gate with a very expensive electronic arm. It has a simple button that you push, and we've had many problems with these neighbors, but instead of pushing the button to open the gate, which is a very simple action, they decided to push it open, and it bent the gate. If you want to, can I give these to you?
Move to receive and file.
I'm sorry. Shall I just show it from here?
You can put them there. If you want to put them on the screen, we can put them right over there first.
Chair. Can we put the parcel ID up on this? If we have more people talking, that we can orient.
Can we get the parcel ID up there, after those pictures? I drove that a few months back, so I'm familiar with the area.
Need to keep talking.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, it's just a financial burden, not only for all the neighbors because of maintenance of Marion Lane, but also personally for my husband and me. We now have to replace this mule arm. They've been unwilling to assist or even respond and take any ownership of the matter. And we're quoted at a minimum $25,000 to try to fight this legally. Thank you.
Nancy Hazelwood, followed by Cindy Buckle. We never got to see her pictures.
Yeah, we'll get those pictures up. Can you hang on one second, Nancy?
Sure.
So where's her private drive?
I'm seeing this all down there.
That's the broken gate.
Okay. All right, if it would go back to the...
She has two.
If you put the parcel ID up, just kind of back it a little bit so we can get a better overall view.
You want her back up? I'll sit down.
No, it's okay. I just, we're just trying to look at it. Okay. Go ahead, Nancy.
That's the wrong image for me, though.
Oh, okay, your image. Go ahead.
Nancy, here's what, 34110, "A Nice Place. I hope you don't mind listening to what's on the line this morning." This is the green swamp. It figures very prominently in the Northeast Rural Area Plan. If you take a look at that, you can see that the Northeast Rural Area Plan is kind of protecting the green swamp from the rest of what's going on in Pasco. I want to switch from there. I've advocated for equestrian growth and development in the area, but I can't seem to get any traction on it. I know you all have a growth and development people on board, but nobody seems to look at that yet. You've got Ocala down the way, it's second in the country for equestrian. Why can't we pick up? I don't want to be Ocala, but let's pick up what they have. Why isn't this economic development done in a different way? I know we've got a bunch of sports, and you picked that up, but everybody's got sports. Nobody has it. Where else but Florida can people bring their horses in the wintertime? We've also got the little Everglades sitting over there. I don't know how they feel about, but maybe somebody could approach them. That was a huge fundraiser for Northeast Rural and the county, and that could have gone places. So if we can't go equestrian, where are we going to go? I'm, you know, I'm hearing things like, you know, we need a well fill. Why do we need a well fill? We aren't supposed to grow in Northeast Rural. We need a wastewater treatment. Why do we need a wastewater treatment plant? If it's for the rest of Pasco, let's put it on the rest of Pasco, not way out in the north end. So there's many things that I have on my mind, and you all are approving things that are going to whittle it down. Let's slow it down, take a look at where it can go, what we can do to save our water resources in the green swamp. The Brooksville Ridge figures in there. We've got something that's unique and wonderful. Do you really want to garbage it up with 10 houses per acre or apartments like the rest of it? Because that's where it's going right now. I mean, it doesn't look like it, but I've watched this for how many years? 20 now? Anyways, thank you for being patient with me. I appreciate it. Bye-bye.
So, Mr. Chair, the last one I have signed up in person is Cindy Buckle. If you would come to the podium, and then I do have someone online.
Okay. Cindy Buckle, 5938 Frontier Drive, Zephyr Hills, Florida, 33540. I want to start off with the fact that I have a bachelor's degree in wildlife ecology and conservation, but my big thing is the equestrians. I have had horses my entire life in Pasco County. 30th Street was 30th Street. Highway 54 was Highway 54. I showed horses my entire life. I have moved three times now because development has flooded my pasture. I can no longer afford to move to any of the equestrian properties that are being offered in Pasco County because they start at $500,000 for 2 acres, up to $2 million for 43 acres. I don't have that kind of money. I have been forced off two properties, and I'm currently living on Frontier Drive, which is an equestrian community. And right now, there is development happening at the corner of Gateway and Marks, which is, or Gateway and 54, which is the only way we have to get into Frontier Drive. Frontier Drive was severely flooded after Hurricane Milton, and it wasn't because, the whole reason was because there's no kind of drainage. It is a private road. We have ponds on the road. We want to keep it private, and right now, the trucks that are dumping dirt onto that 27-acre property are coming down our road, destroying our road, turning around at the end of the road and destroying it. We do not want our road repaved. Every resident on the road has signed a petition to say so. We have maintained it. We don't want it.
We have maintained it, we don't want it taken care of. But my question is, Ocala has built equestrian places, and I'm talking five acres. And while, that's fine, but if you could bring equestrian properties here, even a 20-acre property or some kind of area where boarding facilities could be given to people who have horses. I know people right now that are selling their horses because they have nowhere to go with them, and I'm over it. I am personally, it's just, it's hard. And right now, we're losing our places to ride horses. We actually have to put them in a trailer to take them somewhere to ride. And this is a shame because Pasco County, I've ridden horses for 50 years. And it's time for you all to look at the more, more space instead of the zero lot line cookie cutter homes. And we don't need any more industrial cement plants in the rural areas. We have to save some rural Pasco.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board before I go to online? I will close public comment in the room, online.
Okay. Mr. Ross Jager, we have elevated you. If you would like to unmute, you can begin your, your comments after you've stated your name and address for the record.
Good morning, everyone. Ross Jager, Y D Park, G B Park, 1366, Veronica Drive, question.
Thank you, you may proceed.
My question in common today is with regards to the Brooklyn Water Shuttles by Alson Water. The founder of the county, he has eventually taken that over. And I was in a union chain with the community assistance and some other people from the relative departments from the county, and that kind of just suddenly stopped. We didn't get the responses that we were told we were going to get. And not only that, as a member of the community and constituent, I'm also a member of the media, and we've got a bunch of people that have gone on record to say that they're pretty frustrated. We have the unannounced shut-off of water in the middle of the day, in the middle of 400, washing dishes, whatever, the training to done around the house. And all of a sudden, that stops with no notice. Today's invite for today's meeting, I got at 9:54 AM today. So, the issue is communication and how can the commissioners and the county better improve that and make it more efficient and even consistent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, no one else?
All right, that'll end public comment. We're going to go to the consent agenda. I have one item so far listed as C29 to be polled. Are there any other polls from the consent agenda?
No. Not hearing any move to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair, can we find out whether Commissioner Starkey's voting? Because if she is, then we need a roll call.
Is she allowed to?
She can, if she...
They vote. Okay, then I'll go later.
Let me do roll call, please.
I'll do roll call. District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Waitman, C29.
Yes, just wanted to highlight C29. Excited to see this, this come forward and appreciate 4G Ranch and working with Florida Department of Agriculture and our county's E-LAN program to preserve 1,800 acres off the table of 52 and 4G. So, I just wanted to pull that and, you know, highlight that item and excited to see what we might be able to do and how quickly we might be able to preserve it and what we might be able to, you know, accomplish working with landowners like these. So, Mr. Chair, with that, I move approval.
Second. And just a little further discussion, I'd like to say that I appreciate the 4G Ranch doing that with us, with Department of Agriculture. I think it's great to kind of protect it. I, I know people don't want to see 54, I mean, 52 grow like 50, 54 did, so I think it'll be good to keep it a little bit rural up there, and that's a great way to start, so we appreciate it, too. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Roll call.
Roll call.
District One, District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District Four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
And District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye.
Okay. And I'll go to regular R31, draft a future action plan presentation.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of County Commissioners, Joanna Cheshire, Chief of Staff, County Administration. I'm here to introduce regular item 31. This is a presentation only for you today, but it will be back before you the next board meeting on June 17th for hopefully your approval. What we have for you today, the presentation, is a very abbreviated version of what we've provided during the three public hearings on our action plan over the past month and the one-on-ones that we gave to you all leading up to this meeting. June 17th is a big day for us because we hope that the action plan is approved and we send that to HUD, get the ball rolling there. But it also is the day that the solicitations for the implementation consultant are due. So, that we're really rocking and rolling. I want to just, before I pass this over to Marcy and Connor, let you all know, if you don't know already, that, you know, we've been in communication with HUD, and they did review our action plan, just kind of non-binding, just a preliminary review. And they did say that they read every word of it, and this is one of the best ones they've seen. So, we're very proud of the team and the work that we've done. This truly is kind of the, the training of the marathon here, the, the piece that not a lot of people get to see, but a lot of work goes into it before we can go to our, our six-year marathon with the implementing of this funding. So, with that, I'll pass it over to Connor.
Thank you, Joanna. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing us to speak today. My name is Connor Donovan. I'm a program administrator with the Office of Disaster Recovery Resources, affectionately referred to as ODER. So, we'll get into it today. Just a quick introduction, we're going to try to be really brief, so it feels like I'm skipping over anything. If you guys want to ask us any questions at the end, obviously, we're here. It's a community development block grant for disaster recovery. It was announced in January 2025 that we would be receiving $585 million. Just as a note, it is a six-year cost reimbursement grant, and in order to gain access to that funding, we need to submit our action plan and some other pre-grant audit type of stuff. So, don't think that we have that money right now and we're just sitting on it. That's not the case now, that'll never be the case. Even once we get the grant agreement after our action plan is approved, it would come to us in the form of a line of credit. Of that $585 million, 509 million is for our unmet needs, so that's all the different allocations we're divvying up. And then, 76 million is a set aside amount for mitigation specifically. So, as we move forward in this presentation and our action plan, whenever you hear mitigation, just think that $76 million, we don't have any wiggle room with just yet. That, that cannot go up, that cannot go down until we get a couple of years into our program and we can identify all the other things we're doing to justify a potential increase. Another note on this slide is those three specific storms, Hurricanes Idalia, Helene, and Milton, those are the three storms we received this grant funding for. That is all that this grant funding can be used for. And so, when I say that, that means direct and indirect impacts from those three storms. God forbid we get hit with another hurricane this summer or some no-name storms. This funding cannot do anything to help us address those. It has to stick to those three named storms on this slide. So, program basics, just to go over it real quick, you see housing up there, number one, it is a grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So, naturally, that's kind of the, the top priority that HUD looks at. When it comes to housing, we're really focused on two components, individual housing programs, which are things like reimbursing people for repairs they've already made to their homes, helping them demolish, rebuild, elevate their homes, those one-on-one individual type of projects. And then, there is larger housing development, things like senior housing, transitional housing, low-income housing. Those are kind of the two sides of the housing coin. And then, the only other eligible uses I'll really touch on because it can get kind of confusing is infrastructure and mitigation. Those projects, as far as types of projects go, are very, very similar. The difference is that infrastructure is fixing or addressing things that were damaged due to the storms, whereas mitigation is lessening future impacts regardless of what happened during the storms. So, kind of a good example, when we're thinking that through, is if I lived on the water and my house got flooded, my area got flooded, it destroyed the road, it destroyed my lift station, well, fixing the road and fixing the lift station is an infrastructure project. I'm making an improvement based on damage from the storm. If I wanted to build a seawall or elevate that lift station or insulate that lift station so it doesn't happen again, that's a mitigation project because it's not something that existed before, we're just putting that in so that it lessens future impacts. So, mitigation and infrastructure very closely tied together, and mitigation is the only category that does not have to tie back to the storms directly or indirectly. So, mitigation is definitely going to be our most competitive category. As far as key spending requirements go, 70% of our total grant funding, so 70% of that $585 million, has to be spent on low and moderate income individuals, households, or areas. And so, what that looks like is if you're a household of one person, that's just over $58,000. If you're within that income cap, you would be considered LMI. If you were a family of four, it would be just about $84,000. You'd be within that income cap. You've got to meet one of HUD's three national objectives benefiting LMI, we just went over. You could eliminate blight or address an urgent need, have to tie back to impact from the storm unless it's mitigation, and then it has to address an unmet need with no alternative funding source identified. And so, really, what that means is just no creative accounting. If we adopt something in our budget this year, we are not able to shift that around later on and pay for it with the grant. However, we can address funding gaps. So, if we got $2 million for a $3 million project in our budget, this could fill in that last million to get us over the finish line. So, draft action plan methodology. Thankfully, it was not just us sitting in a room thinking of what's going to stick and what percentages look good. There's three ingredients for drafting our action plan allocations. The first is the HUD requirements, we just went over. The second is community feedback, and the third is our unmet needs data. And so, those three things combined get us the allocations we're going to talk about today. So, community feedback, we held four town halls before we developed our action plan to kind of aid the creation of that, and then we held three public hearings after it was posted to get feedback and see where we missed the mark, were we happy, did we land where we needed to land. We also attended different community events, Chamber of Commerce meetings, nonprofits, the Hurricane Expo. What you see up there is really what we found regardless of method of communication, people want to move back into their homes and they do not want the storm to impact them the same way that it did this time. Really, housing and infrastructure were the top two regardless of what we did, whether it was a survey, an interactive budget game, our actual in-person comments, housing and infrastructure were the top two far and away. Now, when it comes to unmet needs data, you might look at this and see only three categories, even though we just on a couple of slides ago had six eligible funding categories. That is correct, and it is confusing, and that's the way HUD does it, so I apologize for that. But they want you to focus on the three core aspects of recovery, even though you can spend it across six categories. Those three core aspects are housing, infrastructure, and the economy. When you see these percentages up there, I really want to emphasize, these are not our allocations, this is just the data piece. This is just the data piece, so one of those three ingredients that make up our action plan. And we also recognize that the data is flawed, okay, but it is the best that we have available. And why is it flawed? Because every town hall we went to, when we would ask people, did insurance or FEMA identify your damage and give you an accurate assessment? And so, if I had $10,000 worth of damage, FEMA said you had $10,000 worth of damage, and I think they just about booed me out of the room, they started throwing stuff because that is just not the case, okay? So, we are using FEMA estimates, we are using insurance data, we're using Small Business Administration FEMA reporting, and what this really comes down to is our estimated impact numbers, which are the insurance claims and FEMA damage reporting totals minus our funds available, which has nothing to do with the grant, that's the claims paid out and FEMA assistance paid out, equals your unmet needs number on that bottom row. We just increase it by 30% to account for a couple of things, one being inflation over the course of the six years we have to spend this money, and the second being how much federal projects cost more than other projects in terms of Davis-Bacon law, increased building standards, that kind of thing. And so, when Amy gets up here later, she can verify that I am really bad at math, but this is simple. It's your estimated impact minus funds available, which is your claims paid out, equals unmet needs, and that unmet needs number is just increased by 30%, so times 1.3. So, again, that is just one of the three ingredients, so where do we actually land? We land on these program allocations. I'm going to turn it over to Marcy to talk through some of our different programs that make up these percent allocations.
Good morning, and for the record, Marcy Yesberg, Senior Program Administrator for the Office of Disaster Recovery Resources, and for the record, the only one that calls us odor is Connor. And also, for the record, just in case you think that we've been out and we've been thrown things at, nobody ever threw anything at Connor at any of our meetings. So, I just want to clear that up for the record. So, we're going to go over how we're going to spend the money because that's exactly what this is all about. $585 million, we have used what I will call the KISS principle, we've kept it simple, rather than coming up with lots of different programs. We aggregated programs as much as we could in response to, again, the data that we received and the community, the community input. And first, we're going to start off with our housing programs for $305 million, we've divided that into three programs. And I will tell you that almost every meeting that we went to, people said, please use this, use this money to get people back in their homes. So, we took that very seriously and created a repair, reconstruction, and elevation program, RRE for short, for $155 million. In this program, we will repair, reconstruct, or elevate if needed in a flood zone owner-occupied housing units. So, that will be the original footprint of the house, but when we, if it, as we build it back, we will be using energy-efficient materials. We could add handicapped, accessible rails, ramps, things like that that are needed for, for people. And then, if it is located in a flood zone, we would elevate it up to what is needed. In addition to doing our repairing and reconstruction, what we also are suggesting that we do is reimburse people because we know that some people have not waited. They've, they, they want to get back into their house, they want to make sure that they have a safe place to live, so they've started their reconstruction or they've finished it. And so, we want to be able to reimburse them for that work. So, if they have receipts and nobody else has reimbursed them for that work, we want to be able to reimburse them for that work. And if, maybe they just did the minimum amount to get back in, but there's other things that they really need to do to get that house livable or up to code, we can add to it with the rest of our reconstruction. So, we will do that for owner-occupied, and also in this program, we're suggesting that we do it for small rental properties, for either rental single-family properties, but also a duplex or a triplex, under four or five units. We could also do the same thing. In addition, we could do demolition clearance of properties, and I just want to be clear about the difference of meeting the HUD national objective. So, if we're doing this for an income-qualified person, then that meets the LMI standard. But let's say there's a property that needs to be demolished and we don't do anything else with the property, that is a different in category, and so that doesn't count to your LMI. But we can do that, and we could also do voluntary buyout for properties and allow the, the space to then become green space. So, in addition to that...
Marcy, let me stop you just for a second on that issue. At my meeting yesterday, we talked about this a little bit, and I just want everyone to think about this as we go through it. This is a high-level thing so we can make changes as we go because it's not super specific to exactly what we do, but as far as one of the things I'm going to be looking for is if you have affordable housing, you don't want affordable housing in, to me, a flood zone. Leisure Beach, Van Durham, we had that project taken in, we couldn't get, we couldn't use CDPG money because we were going to try to buy it years ago because the HUD wouldn't allow it. allow it. So my thinking is why would I want HUD funding to go put affordable housing in a flood zone? Right? Doesn't make sense to me. So I want you to take a close look at that. I'm not going to, I'm going to be looking at that closely as it comes forward, so I just want to make that point. Go ahead, Marcy.
So the next program that we are proposing is a manufactured housing program for $50,000, $50 million. See, I'm taking the thousands like you did Commissioner Marion.
It's like I did yesterday.
So got to start thinking in terms of millions. So we had a number of our seniors and Commissioner Yeager was on the front lines of all of this that live, they retired, they bought mobile homes down in, specifically even west of 54, and they were living independently, they were living well, and they, the hurricanes came along and they lost everything. They, they lost everything. And now they have no place to live, some of them are actually at our Pasco Hope and some are relocated and found apartments to live in, but none of them could live as inexpensively as they did while they were living that way. So we are proposing to do the same thing, to repair or replace single-family owner occupied manufactured homes. It does not have to be on their own lot, it could be within a park, and we could also reimburse those people if they've done any kind of work in their homes, we can do that as well. And then as well as demolition and clearance of those properties and buying them out and helping people to relocate to other places. In both of those scenarios, we're talking about replacing like for like. So whatever is the footprint of the house, whatever was the footprint of the mobile home, replacing it with manufactured modular or other type of housing. And for the residential homeownership, replacing the house as it exists. And then-
Can I stop you again, Marcy? Thanks. And I just want to cover these points just because these things are going to come up later, but it's good to discuss it. I was at a affordable conference down with Senator Brandis, he had it last year, we had it again this year about trying to work with it as far as hurricane recovery as well as just overall affordable housing. And one of the things, we had a speaker there talk about manufactured homes. So one of the fears was we don't want to just have mobile homes redone, put out there, et cetera. We'd like to get those changed over. Manufactured homes goes to a different set of standards of the Florida Building Code, but they still can withstands and they do things a little bit differently to wind duration to make it so that it's safe or safer sometimes in a regular home built. So that is what they're talking about manufactured homes, so don't be scared of the mobile home thing, it's still going to be a safer construction. As far as voluntary buyouts and relocation, I want you to consider this, our prime real estate should be along the coast anyway, so as long as we're elevating properties and going, I'm not going to be looking too many buyouts where I can't use that land again for someone else to come in that wants to build a nice structure that'll be worth a lot of money and improve the demographics of the West Side as well. So just kind of to keep that in mind. Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you, Commissioner. To your point about mobile homes versus manufactured, that same speaker probably said that a mobile home has not been built since 1977, that the current structures are manufactured homes and they, when Hurricane Andrew came through, they all took a much more stringent look at wind safety and other things. So yes, that's exactly what we're talking about. Now, let's go on to the last category and that's our affordable housing construction program. And for $100 million, what we're talking about is acquiring and building either new single-family homes, and that would be either an infill property or perhaps a small development, as well as new construction of rental units, again, on the smaller side, duplexes, quadruplexes, triplexes, as well as multifamily units like senior housing. We would be able to do something very unique and that would be buying out some of these mobile home parks that were completely destroyed and maybe doing a demonstration project in those mobile home parks of some new and innovative construction, whether it be Lego homes or container homes or different types of housing. So this gives us a real opportunity. And let me finish the housing category by just saying that we went into the hurricanes with a deficit in affordable housing in meeting the needs of people 80% below of the median income, and then we lost another 8,500 units. So this strategy is bringing about 30% of the money of that unmet need to bring more housing and better housing into the county. The next area that we're going to talk about is infrastructure, and as Connor said, it's infrastructure and housing were the two frontrunners everywhere we went. Even when I spoke to complete business communities, everybody said we need housing, we need infrastructure. So we divided our infrastructure money of $130 million into two categories. The first category is critical infrastructure. This money will only be available to our municipalities and the county. And this critical infrastructure is just what we would all think of, roads, evacuation routes, stormwater improvements, flood improvements, water, wastewater dredging. We talked even just earlier about, about power and utilities, it could involve some of that as well. And then the second area of infrastructure is for public facilities. And we do know that when we, and that's for $30 million, during the hurricanes, we put people in schools, they go into community centers, we had our libraries being used, and sometimes those public facilities sustained damage, and they're not able to function as well as they did before and they could function better. So public facilities will be open not only to our municipalities and to the county, but also to our nonprofits, including our hospitals, and that could improve the public facilities, do clearance, demolition, rehab, and reconstruction of buildings. We could also do acquisition of real property, which speaks to the idea of acquiring utilities.
Can I stop you one more time? I want people to know that as far as like the infrastructure, I think it's the biggest opportunity we've got, and it's also probably the best value for a lot of things that we do because, as you heard, they put money in for inflation that takes six, on for six years, so it may drive up numbers. With these infrastructure projects, you get a couple of benefits. First of all, you lessen your administration cost of a project because it's going to go through. Second, you're going to lessen the inflation, lessen the inflation effects that are going to be out there as well. Right now, out in Hudson, for the second time in two weeks, we've got Hudson Water Works having main breaks that are out there that may be causing some stormwater mixed with that with our stormwater and their freshwater that they're trying to go. That could be one of the things we take a look at, and that was something that we looked at 20 years ago, so that's not a brand-new idea. The utility companies out there is what we first tried to get, and if we took both of them together, it could be a good thing. But as far as everything else that we do, I want to focus, those big projects could be a much better value as we're taking these steps.
So we're going to move on to another category, and that would be economic revitalization. So we're now into our green portion of our rainbow chart for $25 million, and we've created a small business and nonprofit recovery program. And this would be used for businesses that need to replace damaged signs, machinery, perhaps inventory, equipment, any repairs for physical damage, and any technical assistance related to the recovery. It could also be used for job training or job retraining as people lost jobs or even industries were hurt, that they could be redirected into something new. And that would be $25 million, both for businesses and nonprofits. Next, we're going to go to public services and specifically $10 million, because as we know, recovery is not just about putting people back into their homes or fixing buildings, but it's also about people and the human element. And many of our people are still going through recovery and in places where they are in temporary living situations. So when we look at that and we look at the fact that we have some of our seniors living on a fixed income, losing all of their housing, so now needing case management, perhaps some budgeting and learning how to live on $900 a month, legal services and getting the, getting the, their applications reviewed or their services that they believe they're entitled to, employment and recovery services, homelessness, food security, and basic needs. So that's $10 million, that will be for nonprofits, and that will be for the next six years. We did talk about mitigation, and again, the difference between infrastructure and mitigation is that all the previous programs that we talked about, that I mentioned, the housing, the infrastructure, economic revitalization, and public services, they all have to tie back to the storms. So either directly or indirectly, there needs to be the tieback. However, for mitigation, what we're looking at is building back stronger. We're building a stronger Pasco County. And for $76 million, I will tell you that this is going to be our most competitive money area because people, especially all of our governments, are all looking at ways that they can improve their infrastructure that wasn't necessarily damaged by the storms. So again, we could do improvements to infrastructure, we could do improvements to public facilities, we could do clearance, demolition, reconstruction, and the key for this $76 million, which is very unusual for a federal grant, is it can be used to match another federal grant, which is almost unheard of. So in this case, we could use a little bit of this money to leverage and get more money from other grant sources. So those are $76 million for mitigation. As Connor said, that is a set amount, that cannot change. Perhaps after a couple of years, if we show that we've met the other needs, we could go back and ask HUD for a waiver so that we could do more on mitigation, but as of now, that, that amount cannot go up or down. So we're rounding out our programs, and the next one we created was a planning program, planning for a better future. We allocated $10 million for that, and planning is just really what it says. We're talking about preparedness plans, hazard plans, feasibility studies for, perhaps for stormwater, for mitigation, for infrastructure. We can do capacity building for nonprofits. We can even look at some creative and different building, housing delivery services, and then once we investigate it and see what works well in this area, then do a demonstration, new housing development somewhere. So it's a nice connection. Same thing with mitigation or feasibility, we could do the study first, and if all the ducks line up and it's right, then we could fund it under infrastructure or mitigation. And lastly, we have administration for $29 million, and this is a set amount also from HUD, it's 5% of the grant, and those are the costs that are related to developing, managing, and overseeing the entire program for the next six years. All these numbers are tracked and audited by HUD. These will not only pay salaries and pay consultant fees, it will also pay for projects that perhaps don't follow through, and that happens all the time. We could be doing a house and it turned out that the person maybe really wasn't income qualified, or when further, further investigation in an infrastructure project, we found that it can't go forward, that's considered a failed project. We can't use grant money for that, but we can use admin money for that. So that's our cushion so that I don't have to stand in front of you and say, oops, we did it wrong and I need money from your general fund to cover it. So that's what we use the admin for.
Can I ask you a question? So I was wondering, as we're picking the firms to help us kind of spend this money, is there any way that we could have a presentation by each of them, kind of like we did with the lobby firms?
So you, if I, I'll answer that. We currently have a solicitation underway. We have a selection committee made up of staff members and assistant county administrator for our normal policies, and then we'll bring a shortlist to the board like we would normally do during that process.
Okay.
That's how it's currently structured.
And they'll be able to do a presentation?
They will do presentations to staff, staff will make the selection and recommend that if I'm hearing the board.
So can the shortlist do a presentation to the board?
I would probably advise you that it would be, we can get into the legal ramifications here with procurements. I mean, the board can always do what it wants to do, of course, I mean, but I would, I would suggest we let staff make the suggestions and the recommendations to the board, that would be where I'm sitting with it, but if the board wants to be involved in it-
I'd love to be involved.
-you're prerogative.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I think, you know, $585 million, this is like life-changing for the county, picking out who's going to be looking at what their experience is, if there's a way to get it done, I'd like to bring it where we could look at it.
I mean, you have the authority to veto or move the numbers of what the staff does. I mean, that would be fine if the Commissioner Oakley wants to add, but-
Commissioner Oakley?
Yep. I just wanted to say that we have a very good process in purchasing and doing these jobs and construction jobs throughout the county, and we've always let our staff present that and do it in the way they do, and they've done a very good job and kept us out of hot water with attorneys and things of that nature. So I would tend, I don't mind hearing about who's going to be doing it, but the fact of it is, I would let our process go through that it has in the past, and it keeps us out of our hands being on things that shouldn't be on through the attorneys and things of that nature. So we're set up to take care of those things in, in the administration.
Mike, regardless of what consultant gets elected, the final decision of how this money is spent will come to the board, correct?
Always.
So you're going to have input to your point, you're going to, you're going to have that input.
Yeah, true. But I mean, the dialogue of sometimes asking questions that want to be asked, is there a way that we can set up to have it before the board without jeopardizing?
I'll defer to the purchasing director who's here.
Commissioner Waiton, do you want to add any to the point?
I think that the procurement process ought to play itself out, and I tend to align with Commissioner Oakley on weight letting staff pick who the most qualified person is, and if it's close, like if it's, if it's close, and then purchasing director says, hey, what do you, what are your guys' spidey senses, then we take a look. But I mean, if the procurement shows that there's one firm that comes out, you know, way ahead of another, that could be kind of dangerous for us.
Then why didn't we do that with the lobby firms?
I have no idea why.
Well, on the lobby firms, the board did service the selection committee on that, and that's, that's for good reason. These are your lobbyists and they're representing us, you know, in Tallahassee and in Washington, DC. On typical procurements for services, that's typically deferred to the team. We have an assistant county administrator that sits on those selection committees along with technical experts and staff who are actually, you know, skilled at looking at what, what these folks are going to bring. And again, we shortlist them, we always bring that shortlist to the board, and then the board ultimately will, will agree or disagree on, on the contracts. It has happened in the past where the board has gone against a, you know, staff decision, and that's, that's perfectly fine.
To be clear, Commissioner, I'm indifferent, I just am hesitant to inject into the middle of a, of a procurement until it's, until it's done with protests and different things that can arrive and delay, delay the process. If it comes to where we want to see or hear, I'd be glad to hear them out, I just tend to be cautious in the procurement process, just simple facts of protests and delays and compounding of months and times, which ultimately, you know, pains everybody.
I agree with that.
My concern would be with the lobby, and it did take time in terms of coordinating schedules, and there is a scheduled element, but Carrie, any color to land?
Yes, Carrie Roberts, purchasing director for the county. It is allowable, but again, I would also recommend against it for protest reasons that, you know, you all be the deciding board body if there is a protest, so it would come back to you at that point. When we do bring the shortlist to you, if you have questions at that point, you can send staff back to, to get answers for that as well.
So let me- So let me ask this, and I don't need to necessarily be the part of the selection committee itself, but when, when the contract's going to get written, there's going to be certain things I'm looking at, what I want to go after. So in your procurement, as you've got it, and again, we get $29 million of admin, I don't want that going out. I mean, if we really need to go, that's why I think like bigger projects with the Gulf Consortium, Escambia County, for an example, picked one project to do. Their administrative costs were like 1% compared to what four, five or sometimes 10% if you did a reef project. Much more effective. When you're putting this procurement out and this is going out there, are we able to look at what they're going to do per project to what they're going to get paid all the way, every step?
Yes, sir.
All right. So and that's, and that's, I'm comfortable with that because again, this could be a 585 million.
And we have that process already in place.
585 million, there'd be a lot of eyes on this thing or every step in the way. So anything steps out, so be it. But I think once we have the contract in place, if we've got flexibility to what we're going to negotiate, let's say you're going to do a transfer of Hudson Water Works in Nye, Florida, or the old Nye, Florida, and we negotiate what that number's going to be. If we go look at doing whatever projects may be, if we can look at what those admin numbers are going to be and negotiate those, I'm okay with that. But I do think after the selection, they should come in, do a full presentation and let us go ask our questions so we can kind of get where they want to go, we want to go. If you're okay with that, I, I, I'm comfortable with that too.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd be fine.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, the dialogue.
So let me just wrap up with our timeline. We published our draft action plan on May 12th and according to HUD, we have to leave it open for 30 days of public comment. So we are in that public comment period until June 12th. And then we plan to come back to you at your next meeting on June 17th to ask you to approve the action plan. It does need to be submitted to HUD by June 20th. And they have 45 days to review it. Because we gave it to them ahead of time and got such positive reviews from them, we expect that the 45 days will not be all of 45 days, but it'll be less than that. And then the next step will be for us to get a grant agreement from them, get it signed, and then we should be able to roll out our initial programs. The very first program that we roll out will be our individual assistance, housing assistance. And I'll tell you, it will make Pasco County proud and Pasco County really look good that almost a year after the storms, we'll be starting a program like that, which is very, very unusual. And we heard some of that during our public hearing. So that concludes our presentation. As the county administrator and Joanna, Chief of Staff, have said, we got very positive reviews from HUD and can't take all the credit for that. I do want to acknowledge our consultants that we had working on this from IEM that are with us today, Tim and Jess. They've been to every meeting that we've had and traveled all over the county with us and really to their credit, I think they have absolutely steered us in the right direction. So thank you and Connor and I are here to answer your questions.
Okay, well, Commissioner Oakley, work our way back.
Okay. You took my thunder away because I was going to brag on you, so.
Please go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Everything I've heard you say and, and do and, and watch with a step back away from what y'all were doing came out very, very good. For FEMA, I know they gave you high remarks about the fact that the process did what it was supposed to do. And I think it's because of your experience in doing these type things, that was part of it that made this stand out very much to FEMA and all the, if, if my words are right, they, they said it was one of the best presentations of the use of this kind of money of all counties that, that had been looked, they had looked at. So, so thank you very much. Thank you. And I know it's not just you, it's, there are staff members behind you and other people that help guide the way that, so you don't get there by, to the top by just walking by yourself most time. Most time you got a lot of support staff that are there with you. So thank all the staff that, that is a part of that. So thank y'all for the work you did.
Thank you.
Commissioner Whitman.
Thank you. Yeah, to Echo, Commissioner Oakley, wonderful job out there in the public and listening there, to their passions and concerns and, and their needs. Still a lot of confused and stressed folks out there for sure. It's for, on the economic side, revitalizing and helping small businesses or businesses generally fix their signs, that's probably millions of dollars in savings with, you know, the six-figure sign restoration quotes that businesses are, are getting back and the engineering that goes along with those. I think that's just fantastic and it'll go towards, you know, Commissioner Starkey's sign ordinance efforts to bring signs into compliance and make businesses look, look better. But also I think we ought to move expeditiously on that to, to ease businesses, hey, I need my sign up. That way folks know where we are. We hear it all the time, folks need, you know, they're trying to figure out, A, how to comply and then if their sign's busted, the additional stress and expense that comes with, with the signs. Next, on the affordable housing piece, the 100, 100 million. You alluded, Marcy, what, in our conversations, you alluded to they. So by understanding, we're needing 8,500 affordable units in this county approximately?
Well, we lost 8,500 units and not all of them were affordable. Actually, our studies are showing that we're 36,000 units in arrears for people 80% and below of the median income.
Thank you. So as we move forward, what I don't want to see is under the, you know, verbiage of affordable housing, that it just be a proliferation of apartments going up all over this county. And of course, with those projects, those take years to build and I know, mentioned this in our conversations, I think it's important that we, we figure out a way, if we haven't already, to use this money to use the existing apartment stock, which could get people, we use the funds and get people into a safe, good quality place to live, really anywhere in this county. If people want to move and come into Wesley Chapel or wherever and go to a different school for their kids, I think that instead of building more, that we try to find a way, even if we have to waivers or vouchers or other programs to use our lobbyists that we have, to, to allow us to use the existing apartment stock that we have in this county. Six years is a long time to help somebody and, you know, we have plenty of stock. There's too much, too much free rent all across this county, signs going up and there's, there's a, a healthy inventory. So I think that's, that's an important piece that we need to look at. And if we can't do it, we can't do it. But I think it's important to explore the opportunity there and it helps those businesses fill their beds too.
Do you mind if we hang on that point for a little bit?
Yeah, fire away.
Just because I think all these things, if we go one by one to catch them, I'll be a little bit turkey here.
Yep.
So you want to talk first, Commissioner, to, to this item?
No.
Okay. So what, what I look at is, as far as families go and try to get started and, you know, they've gone through, let's say, a really tough thing right now, I want to look at trying to do some homeownership. I want to try to help, you know, the Habitat Humanities and nonprofits that are out there. The great way that we can help them is if we don't have to fund the whole thing, but we put some incentive money in there for them where they can get a place of their own. And I mean starter homes type thing. And I'm not even talking about necessarily west of 19, but to the other sides where the more affordable for insurance, et cetera. The apartments that have been built, let the market rate bring them down, you will help the other people. I don't want to go, and we've done this before, we put all the money into rental assistance, rental assistance, and then at the end, what are they going to do? They become homeless or they're stuck again. If you put them in a home that they can actually find a way to fund it, buy it, start creating their own wealth, I think it goes a lot better for the community. And I think people that own their own home are more committed to the community. So I want to see more of that happen and I think you can do it leveraging, as we talked about earlier. If you have a, if you're going to give, let's say, someone $20,000, $30,000 for money down to get in a home they couldn't otherwise other afford and it's sold for a cheaper price with a developer, you can create something that can be long lasting for the family. Give them stability, give them, give them comfort knowing what's going to happen in five years when I got to go and now I got to go find someone else, I'm stuck all over again. So I really want to sort of look at that and I think, I mean, I met with Chuck from the CDBG program yesterday, had a good discussion about looking at that and they want to take a look at that. When you consider Habitat Humanities, when they build a project, that person's financing the house for 0%, very affordable. Money down could help even with others doing other things. So there's other opportunities that, Marcy, like you said, let's look at creatively what we can go do. I think there's a better way to go than subsidizing these luxury apartments that are out there where people are going to get stuck again.
It's about time. It takes 12 months at minimum to build a home. That's if you already have the land. So I'm looking at bridging the gap, which I agree with everything you're saying about homeownership. But when you're looking at somebody getting to a home, paying rent while you're building a house or remodeling a house, it's tough. It's very expensive. So we have inventory in the county now. Maybe we've put stipulations in if someone is building a home, if they have an active building permit and they need a place to stay. I mean, essentially, you know, where are they going to stay while they're building their house? I just look at the existing stock of what we have to give people an immediate shot in the arm to help them. Because everything about this program is time, right? Tick tock. So that was, that's the premise of, of it. I certainly, you know, when you see 100 million dollars in the breakdown of it, it just know and knowing what the data's saying with how many units. And we know that the people are going to want to do these projects, are going to come in, they're going to want to build multifamily complexes. As a betting man, I bet we see the majority of the folks coming in, that's what they're going to want to build. It just, I just want to move forward cautiously with that aspect. And also I'm, I'm very cautious in the government getting even more into the housing business. I know it's what this money is, is used for. I just want to make sure that we're laser focused on what we're allocating the resources to.
Just one more point to your thing. I talked to a local gentleman from, I think he's from Zephyr Hills. He builds container homes.
Yeah, I went to work.
Okay. So in 30 days, he can start building homes. If we set up, we were talking about setting up on the west side for the industrial park, he could set up his whole factory right there, create jobs as well as those homes. They can be done real quickly and go. There's other people out there with land that want to see something happen, so.
Those fit perfect on mobile homes, on the mobile home.
Exactly. So if the people want to stay there, et cetera, you know, I mean, it's an opportunity to move fast and keep them in their home they want to be in. And maybe it's a short term thing, maybe it's a six month rental or something. So if it's just bridging a gap to go, I think it's a good way to go, but I just want you to know there's opportunities we can look at to go, work with them.
I just, I just look at this money, big ship, time, years. People need help today, now, yesterday. So that's the lens I'm looking through right now.
Yeah, okay. Any else, other topics?
Good, thanks, Jeff.
Okay. Commissioner Yager.
Okay. First of all, I'm excited to see what our community looks like in seven to 10, 15 years, 20 years. Because I think with all of the creative minds, that our community's going to look a lot different and, but I, I do want to say, when Mike told me that you guys were one of the best, I said to him, I said, doesn't surprise me at all. I said, we are, it, it's just Pasco proud. Like we are, we are the front runners and on so many different levels. And I am just super proud of you guys and everybody who worked on this project to make it what it is. And again, I'm, I'm super excited about the outcome. I think a lot of good is going to come of it. Like Seth was saying, the, the people who are hurting now are, are missing middle for our housing, our seniors, you know? And one thing, you know, just pointing out with our seniors too, I mean, we're having seniors committing suicide right now because they can't handle the stress of what's happening in their life. One of my seniors I've adopted right now is literally on the cliff. And, and it's so hard to stand by and walk with people in that journey and it's all due to this storm. So, you know, we, we just don't realize honestly what a toll it is taking on these people. So just thank you for, you know, everything you're going to do for them, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stark, you on the line? Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, I'm on the line.
Okay.
But I appreciate all your comments. They're very good. And one of the, one of the things I really noticed on Marcy's slide was the, where it says elimination of light. So I'm really looking forward to that. I, I agree with Commissioner Yager that our county will be much better till we're done with this, with this money and it should, should help everybody. So it's, we're making lemonade out of lemons, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to say, Mike, I'm glad that you, when you first heard about this, that you made, you put this directly under you. I think it was a good move. I appreciate the meeting we had yesterday again to go through the things we've talked about and Connor, Marcy, you guys did a great job getting the information. And again, I'm very happy to hear that the positive comments you got from FEMA, from HUD about how great this project is. You've covered so many great things and as we go, this is a very high level thing. So you don't have to specifically get to every single detail what's going to go on, but this presentation was, I think, very important for the board to hear. You can hear our input as well when it comes down to picking the projects and it could be helping the Mercy Center in Dade City that want to go put in, that we don't have all the funding from the state. We've now got time through August to kind of figure that type of thing out to what we want to do. I think there's optimism out there. I talked to a lady today. She got hit with the storm, five feet of water over in Sea Ranch. Can't get through FEMA. She's stuck. She's in a house, she's living in a trailer out in front of her house, wants to get in there, but doesn't have the money to go do it. She's applied for a VALE in Florida, don't know what's going to get the money, but she hasn't even got, other than the $750, I think, two grand from FEMA, nothing. And with all that damage.
Tell her, tell her to, to resend everything because I just had to resend everything and, and got a different outcome.
Okay. Good to know.
Also, people have been going to Congressman Bill Racus's office and they have an incredible, incredible staff of case managers that might be able to shave some trees.
Yeah, she's working with them too, so.
Good.
Yep, they're in, Congressman Bill Racus and the team doing great too. But again, it's a big berth, so all the, all the things that you've got in here provide opportunities to go. The, the thing I liked about our conversation was with all these funds that were allocated to these different pots right now and you can't change mitigation, but infrastructure could, I think within a year's time, especially when you've got planning money that's out there, you can actually start with those things right away. Let's go look at what these things are going to cost. Let's go find out what we can do for matching that planning part. This could, could be a great tool for us. I'm going to be saying as far as the admin, I want to try to cut that down, but I appreciate the flexibility. And I think if we bring this back every single year to what we've done, and I mean, I mean a full board workshop for like, could be four hours, eight hours, whatever, to kind of say, okay, here's where we're at. And I think after August, we should be planning a day, we take another full day to go, here's what we've got, let's go take a look and let's, let's give this the attention it fully deserves. I think with the RFP process, again, I'm comfortable letting staff do it because I know each one of us will probably get phone calls. We, we need to make sure we're informed exactly when that cone of silence is, so we get no communications.
It's now.
It's now, okay. So if, if you would let staff or Carrie, if you would, let those people know that are out there, they're not to put any contact with us whatsoever.
Right.
And if I see anything, it's not going anywhere either, but sometimes you get a call, you don't know where it's coming from. But if you would, just make sure that they all got to know, if they do it, they're out, period. I'm not going to take any improprieties and, don't want to put any commissioners in bad positions. So with that said, I want to say you guys have done a phenomenal job going through. This is a great opportunity. I want to make sure we get it right to help all these people that are so desperately needing it and it's a great, like I say, a great opportunity for us to do some great things for this county. So thank you all.
I'm sure you're ready to go on top.
You're good?
Okay. Anyone else? Good? Okay. And they'll go to R32.
Before we bring Office of Management and Budget up, Mr. Chair, I'd like to bring Parks and Recreation and Natural Resources Director Keith Wiley. R32 and R33 are bond issuances, requests from the board of up to $80 million, but feel it might be in our, our best interest to have Mr. Wiley talk a little bit about the state of parks, especially in the east side, and kind of a little bit about what, what the plans are for, for these dollars. Keith?
So good morning, Keith Wiley, Director of Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Department. To Mike's point, just going to put a little context to, to the request for the bones, bonds that are actually in front of you. This map, you've seen me talk about many times before. This is the level of service slash parks capital project plan. What you see here, just as a reminder, is the color in orange or, or red, light, light What you see here, just as a reminder, is the color in orange or, or red, light, light red, is the, is the area within the county where we're not actually providing park service and that future parks would actually provide that park service. And again, that was supported by the 2015 master plan and supplemental information that we did in the Parks Impact Fee Study a couple of years ago. So just to zoom in on the east side of the county, as a reminder, the impact fee zone is broken into three areas. Specifically, we're going to talk about the east zone. These are the major projects that were identified in the capital plan and the impact fee study, not all projects, but just major projects. And this is your Parks Director listing them in priority, or preference if you will. So you have VOPH District Park, the Bike Park, Dade City Recreation Complex slash Shelter, the Two Rivers District Park, Connected Cities Community Park, question mark on that. I know there's been discussion, not exactly sure, we, we do not have clear board direction on that, but put it into the mix of conversation. San Pasco Park Expansion, and then the Winfields Community Park. Actually, back up. So a couple of points of clarity here. Pretty much everything that you see here was, with the exception of Connected Cities, was, was required through a concurrency requirement in the comp plan. So basically, development application comes in, concurrency is triggered, we negotiate the, the acquisition of, if you will, of the land through either cash or credit, and this is why we're basically having these conversations. Actually, also, San Pasco Park was not a part of that, that was a previous county administration deal worked out many, many years ago. So tied to the specific bond, these are, these are what we're requesting, these are the projects that we're requesting specifically for the bonds. You would have Two Rivers District Park, which would include the acquisition, 16 and a half million is the agreed upon sale price. That agreement is tentatively projected to be presented to the board on June 17th. Also, within the request for bond is the cost to design, permit and construct. And then several workshops ago, the board, I think it was in the joint city workshop, talked about the collaborative effort with the city of Dade City to do a recreation complex slash shelter to provide that sheltering opportunity east side of Pasco County. So there is money in, proposed in the bond to do that project. And then for whatever reason, if, if any of those projects above do not happen, the proceeds could be used for other projects that are currently in process and under design. So that would be VOPH District Park slash Bike Park, or possibly Connected Cities, or any other park project that seems to kind of be created whenever I'm in a meeting recently. So, which is good news. Okay, so little details on the Two Rivers Park land deal and just some options to put everything into perspective. So the agreement that will be presented on June 17th, background on that is the MPUD application, the conditions to negotiate the park agreement was approximately three years ago. At that time, we had the old impact fee that was in place, so the credit value for land was like, not even 100 and, I think it was 112 dollars per dwelling unit. So when you're trying to negotiate, at the time, it was, I think, 100 acres and you're, and Mr. Goldstein can speak to this, and you're, you have the ability to offer credits, but the developer cannot monetize the credits, right? Because your fee is not low enough. Very, very difficult to kind of structure. Or, I'm sorry, yeah, not high enough, correct, yeah. It's too low, I was stuck on that. So difficult to negotiate. In, in addition to that, when you're looking at the old fee and the revenue collected, not having a whole lot of money in the bank, you don't have cash to negotiate. So at the time of the kickoff of the negotiation, we were in the process of getting the impact fee updated. And once obviously that was updated, we had a little more ability to negotiate a credit deal and a cash deal, which is pretty much what we did. Also, the school board at the time was, was involved and it was going to be a heavily co-located project. They actually backed out, then came back in, they bought 40 acres, which kind of brought us back into the table to, to do the negotiation. And this is kind of the rough terms. So three and a half million cash, 3 million in land credits specifically in the east with the ability to use some credits in central, and then a cost share with the school board and the developer on the road that would actually be the entrance to the project in the school at 1 and a half million dollars. So when we're figuring this out, zoomed in a little further on where this is at, and the question is, is do we go all in on option one and we, we basically purchase 80, which is now 85 acres within the actual MPUD of where the concurrency trigger happened? Or do we take a step back and look at, well, we control, we, the county, control parkland at the Winfields Community Development as well as an existing acreage of 40 acres across the street at San Pasco, which then would, you'd be creating two smaller community parks. And, and those are really the options that we have to pick from. When you look at option one, you're basically going to locate a facility that is, again, in the main hub of the trigger for the concurrency requirement, you get everything all in. I'll also say that the land that was offered in the deal, highest and best parkland, I think that I've ever seen in my, in, in my at least 15 years working with Pasco County. So yes, it, it, it's about 8 million more than the, than the impact fee study projected at the time, it was four years ago, so. But what you have is you have high and dry site conditions that would keep the construction costs down because we won't have to bring in a lot of fill to elevate the site. And again, logistically, one site versus two sites, long-term, you're going to be spending more money operationally, kind of basically managing two facilities versus one. So I just kind of wanted to, to paint the picture. I know in, in the briefings, it became very clear that the context should have been probably presented a little clearer before, so my apologies on that. And with that, I'll entertain any questions. I know Amy, Amy's here to talk about the financial side of the deal, but if you have any questions, just overarching about the, the park information, I can answer those.
All right. Ms. Rockwood, I'm good. All right, I want to, just wait. Commissioner. Commissioner Starkey? Okay. All right, so I guess I'm the lone who's not good, but let me have my discussion. Well, and I, I look at this a few different ways. First of all, $200,000 an acre is an absurd number to pay. With the state regulations set into us, how we can control things is tough. Think about the Winfield project, we own that, that property out there for 50,000 an acre. A much better value. When I look at San Pasco, I think, and I think we want to, we have an opportunity to partner with the city of Zephyr Hills, I think there's an opportunity there to do something really good out there, to stretch the money. When I look at, we're going to have to come up with 13.5 million in cash, that means we're going to be paying a bond and financing that for that whole period of time. I would like to see that thing negotiated back down to a, definitely a lower number and, and have a less of a balance with more credits than I would cash upfront. At the Connected Cities, there's an opportunity to do something there as well. I just think that with what we're doing here, with the state legislature talking about how they may be changing property tax, we may get some hits with the local, to throw this burden on the rest of the taxpayers that if this doesn't, if this doesn't pay out well, that we can go to general fund money, which, you know, could get real tight coming down the road. I think it's, it's a risky maneuver that I'd like to at least have this discussion before we make the final steps coming up.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Rockwood, thank you.
The impact fee money won't, they'll take care of that cash eventually.
So, yeah, and the, I think the terms of the deal that Amy would present is the debt service would fall, would fall to the impact fee to pay. And both teams, my department and O and B worked together to ensure that the future revenue projections would address the debt service. Yes, sir.
No. Let's say something dramatic happens with the economy, like back in 2007, I lived through it, the first thing was cut, Parks and Rec, 30%. Libraries, 30%. Guess where the cuts were? And the economy was dropping so bad, we looked even cutting impact fees down to try to get things going to, to make it move. So, like I said, this is a lot of money to go forward. We're paying a top dollar price, we've never paid that much money for a park, right? Nowhere near it.
No.
And, and the way the rules are set up and what's coming up, you don't know what's going to happen. So it should cover it if things keep on going the way they're going. I don't doubt that. But if things drop, now you're going to throw a bigger burden when you're going to be cutting other things as well. Do you really need to do that? Or can you go look at, is there better opportunities out there? And being that I had never seen it before, we had this discussion, like, first thing I saw was, wait a second, how are we spending 80 million dollars? How's it going to go? How's the deal set up? And I didn't get those details. Matter of fact, I don't even know at this point, did the Winfields say that we had to build a park there? Do we know that yet?
Let me, let me try to answer that. So on the zoning map, it shows it as a park. When we acquired it from the developer, we said that we were acquiring it for a park. However, the deed, my understanding, Keith looked at it, it does not have a deed restriction that restricts it to a park.
That's correct.
If we were to surplus the property, you would have to pay back the impact fee funds that were used to provide credits to the developer for the site. And you'd probably have to rezone it to some use other than a park. But could you do that? Yes, you could.
So if we did that, that would be able to cut your bond financing down to go, to get some cash out of that and just, instead of building it there, you build it down there. It's not my district, so I don't know exactly how people feel about making that move, but to do that, I'm looking at, how do we lower this number down? That could be a way to do it. And I guess you could, you could actually even, if you wanted to, sell the San Pasco recreational facility land too, if you wanted to, there's no burdens on that.
Not that I'm aware of, but again, I, I wouldn't recommend that we consider that just because of, you know, I think, I think the growth projections in East Pasco, I think we would probably need to hold at least one of, one of those. I will say that when we did the Parks Master Plan, we, Two Rivers was not in play at the time, but we knew a concurrency requirement would be triggered. So the question I got through the briefings was, do you need all three? So just on the record, I'll say, I know, with a large, with a large district park on the table like Two Rivers, I think that, that gives us the ability to take one of those down. My recommendation, it would be Winfields. And I say that primarily because the site conditions are not optimal for development. So you have approximately 40 acres and significantly less of that has development potential, unlike San Pasco, which it's almost 100% developable.
And this, and we could partner with the city on doing a project or two, which there's going to be a lot of growth coming there, I agree with that too.
Yes.
Again, I'm just looking at, I want to make sure we're protected every step of the way. If we were looking at to go put that Winfields property on the market, to me, this makes it a lot more palatable.
Well, it is my district and I feel like it, I mean, that number is a high number. I'm not taking that number lightly, but the fact of it is, there's a lot of property out here selling for a lot more money than we ever dreamed it would be selling for. And this park is going to be very important to not only the Two Rivers area, but also a large part of the Zephyr Hills themselves. We'll be able to use some of this park, so. It's very important for, for rec to have these parks fit in. And there was, if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe there was any real money set aside a long time ago that, you know, even came close to this kind of money, but we have to make do. But the impact fee that Keith had brought us earlier on, everybody says, oh gosh, that's too much for us to pay. Well, there's no citizen here now paying that. But the people that are coming, bringing the children that need the park eventually, they will be paying that as they're building houses or, or purchasing houses built in Two Rivers and, and in the east side of the county. So I, I think it can be worked out and I, I'm, I'm for saving money, I understand that. But you got to remember also, some of the cities don't set aside money to do a lot of work for, in the east side, for these recreation parks and things of nature. They're not keeping, keeping their values, they're lowering their values as much as they can and don't have money to, to put in when they really need to put in to help build a park. They depend on the county to do most of that work for them. So the fact of it is, I appreciate what they do, but they need to start, step back and look at themselves and actually help put money in these parks to help us. So on the east side.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you want to talk about the other building, the rec center? Is that, will be for another conversation later?
Yeah, I think later. Just, I mean, I, there has been conversation, you specifically talked about the city of Zephyr Hills or Dade City rec.
Oh, the Dade City rec center.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, I would definitely like to talk about that. So that is, that was a project that was identified as purely a recreational complex within the capital plan when we presented the impact fee study. And partnering with the city of Dade City, we basically, you know, came to the conclusion that they needed a larger community center, we needed a rec complex, they needed, we needed a shelter collectively as a region. So we decided to kind of go in, all in on a concept, hence the, the project that I know Commissioner Oakley's familiar with and, and again, was brought up at the joint cities workshop. If for whatever reason, the state money doesn't support, so we put in for, so 20 million was, was the revenue projected out of the, the impact fee specifically, and then we asked for 20 million from the state. If for whatever reason, if, if the money's not 20 million, my professional recommendation is we still proceed with the recreation complex in the city limits because that's, again, a project that we've been trying to fund for 15 years. We could pursue either additional funding or grant funding or some other earlier presentation that I saw possibly that might be eligible, maybe somehow. Very well done, by the way. And, and get that money. So that's, yeah, that's the specifics on that project.
I can give you some more information on it.
Sure.
But this came about, we're meeting with, with one of the commissioners here in Dade City and realizing we needed to do something here in Dade City because we didn't have the rec. We have plenty of kids, but we don't have enough, Birch Parks overflowing with kids, it's full all the time. But that's needed here in this county. It's not only needed for rec area, but it's also very important because when we have these hurricanes and, and storms like we had this past year, we have nowhere to go but in some of the schools. And they're, they're not rated for, you know, 5K storms and things of that nature that continues to, to batter even the east side. It's, it's usually better over here, but this, because it's a rural community here in Dade City and East Pasco County, we actually want to show that we care about our citizens on the coast and we will have that need for bringing those folks over to this side so they feel safer. This is very similar to the Fasano Shelter on the west side. It's more than just a shelter here in Dade City, it's for all, east Pasco County, it's for all the, and it represents the rural area of Pasco County. It also can reach out to Pine Ellis and Hillsborough County for those people that need help for sheltering to come this way away from the coast. And this last storm was a great example of what that was, that was showing because of all the damage we had on the coast. But the fact of it is, this is going to serve a lot of people in our area. It's more of a regional type shelter than just a local shelter. Because we're, we need to invite those other counties to come in with people. And it's already set up for emergency services, for oxygen and other things going to be in there. And it's going to also be the future home of VA office that's here on the east side that will be in this new building. The building they're in right now was built in the 1950s. But that's how old that building is that they're in, that VA service is in. Fact of it is, you sit right there around an elementary school, a junior high school, and very close to the high school here in the Dade City area. So it, it's got a lot of uses and, and really, well, well, the storm showed that we need this. We really do.
Okay. So, and, and I'm a fan of the project.
All right.
Okay. So the, the fact that the early rains last year caused so much more damage when the heavy storms came later on, that these people suffer with the banks of, with Lakouchi come out, I get that, I want to see that, that they have a place. Because they, it's so hard, I mean, we, we opened the place down on Holiday, but people in Hudson, they don't want to go to Holiday, they want to be close to their homes doing their thing.
Oh, I understand.
So I want to, I want to make sure we do the same thing here so people on this side can, can do the same, so.
It'll be the same thing.
I'm, I'm a fan for that. So what I want to say is, when we built the hurricane shelter over in Hudson, the mistake we made, and I brought this up, but I couldn't get a change on the board at the time, was to actually raise the roof where we could make it for just the same activities you're talking about here.
Right.
So it's a great thing. Now, this year with the legislators, we don't know what's going to happen, we'll know in a couple of days, so hopefully by June 17th, we'll be a better position to make a final determination, whatever.
Hopefully that'll come out better.
And, and if we go that way, then so be it, because if we have time to make a final decision exactly what we want to do, because what I don't want to see is do is borrow more money than what we need. I'm glad we get a cap right now of that number that can come down, if we have that flexibility.
Right.
Because what I'm thinking is, let's see what the legislature does, what they think we're gonna get. I think if you look at the planning money, you could actually take and actually design the shelter for, using funds for that rather than just this, because it is hurricane-related.
Uh huh.
We want to build it to the CAT, CAT five standards, so that people can go there, et cetera, and depending that maybe, that definitely what you want to do to maximize it. I think the CDBG DR money could be used for this, and justifiably so, and it may take the amount of money we need to borrow from this bond, so we're not financing all that as well, and you may be lower the number down, but you don't know that till a little bit later.
Right.
I don't want to, I want to make sure that Connor and Marcy, that we are able to do this, structure this to where, I don't want to say we've taken the bond money out for the project, and now that the HUD would say, oh, you've already funded it, so you can't use it, so I need you to put us in a position, if you want to speak to it, that'd be great, but I want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a trick bag where now I can't go use this money. If I can use that DR money instead of the parks money and funding it and financing, et cetera, then that's where I want to go. I want to make sure that we have that opportunity to make it happen.
Well, because this is, we haven't, have not collected any money for this, but we've been thinking about this idea this year because of these storms, and you understand.
I'm all for the, I know that. No, and I just want to make sure we bring the number down, get the best value for it.
I want to do it the right way, and if we don't get money from the state, then we need to be prepared. It does fit in.
Oh, I agree.
For agreement for part of that money from five eighty-five, but if we can get monies elsewhere and then use impact monies from rec, then we'll be good, and those monies can go toward more things we do for our citizens.
Exactly, because it's gonna be between.
And I'm agreement with that.
Yeah, with connected cities, Winfield, et cetera, other things out there, I want to make sure we maximize what we can do, and again, I think that CDBG DR money works well, I just want to make sure as we set this up, that we don't show that we've already funded it, that we can't use the money for.
It isn't funded, so.
No, no, but, but if we pass these bonds and we say that's what it's for, we could be in a trick bag, I just want to.
Mr. Church, just to be clear, there's nothing in these bonds that say, that identifies specific parks. It says it has to be for parks, but it does not identify any specific.
It doesn't even identify this shelter at all.
I just, I'm just making sure we're clear.
It's intentionally done that way so that they have that flexibility to move the money to different parks.
Yeah.
Marcy Esper, Senior Program Administrator for Office of Disaster Recovery Resources. I do want to clarify that the, and we've spoken about this, Commissioner, that since that community center did not exist and was not damaged during a storm, it is a mitigation project, so that would be out of the seventy-six million competitive millions of dollars. And I would, so there, there are no projects in the action plan, and I would hate for you to miss an opportunity to bring in funding and then not get funding from a competitive seventy-six million dollars. And if, if the bonds do not directly tie to anything, then you're not supplanting anything.
Okay. That's good. Amy, you want to say something?
I think she does. She's got a whole presentation. Are we, are we good to move to the financial?
I think so, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Keith.
I'm Amy Farrell, Budget Director with Pasco County's Office of Management and Budget. So before you, I have two different resolutions, all connected to the same bond issuance, so R thirty-two and R thirty-three, O M B twenty-five zero zero four five and O M B twenty-five zero zero four six respectively. All right, so the first one, zero zero four five, is a resolution authorizing the issuance of a not to exceed eighty million dollars in aggregate principal amount of Pasco County, Florida capital improvement, non-add valorem revenue bonds. Series twenty twenty-five A, for the purpose of financing and/or reimbursing the costs of the acquisition, expansion, design, construction, and equipping of various capital improvements of the county, including without limitation, parks and recreation projects, and paying associated transactional costs, covenanting to budget appropriate and deposit legally available non-add valorem revenues to provide for the payment thereof, making certain covenants and agreements for the benefit of the owners of such bonds, authorizing certain officials and employees of the county to execute any document and take all actions required in connection with a competitive sale, issuance, and delivery of such bonds, taking certain other actions with respect to such bonds, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. All right, now zero zero four six, this is a resolution authorizing competitive bids and approving the forms of the official notice of sale and summary notice of sale pertaining to such bonds, making certain provisions and delegating certain responsibilities with respect to the official notice of sale, bidding, and sales of such bonds, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a disclosure dissemination agent agreement, approving the form of and the distribution of a preliminary official statement and authorizing the execution and delivery of a final official statement pertaining to said bonds. Appointing a paying agent and bond registrar, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, authorizing certain officials of the county to execute any document or to take any actions required in connection with the issuance of said bonds, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Okay, so in short, we're looking to do a covenant to budget and appropriate, which means we'll use legally available revenue sources that are non-add valorem to pay the debt. Primarily, we will be looking to use the park impact fees from the east, but a covenant to budget and appropriate allows us to use any legally available revenues. This allows us to get better interest rates and things like that, because sometimes impact fees, to Commissioner Mariano's point, can become volatile. It is a not to exceed amount of eighty million dollars, aggregate principal plus related gross premium, and we will be following a competitive bid process to ensure the lowest possible interest rate given current market conditions. All right, so what does the timetable for this look like? So important dates, we already talked about projects, so I'm gonna skip over those.
I'd hang on to that slide. I'd hang on to that slide, you have will provide, I think you should put in may provide.
Yes, may provide. So like we said, the resolution itself gives a very broad definition.
I know, but that's a key word.
Yes, so may, we'll scratch that out and make it may. All right, so important dates, so right now, our timeline has June sixteenth as our competitive bond sale date, that is the point at which the amount we're borrowing becomes cemented in stone. So if we would want to push that back, this would be an excellent time for the board to direct us to do that, if there were other things we wanted to explore. Point of note, June seventeenth is when the land agreement comes to the board. June twenty-fourth is currently our pre-closing, and then June twenty-sixth is that final firm closing.
Okay, any questions? And do we have a motion? Again, I want to make sure that, look at that slide where it says the word may, that we have the flexibility.
That's the end, okay. Oh, wait, nope. There's more. All right, so, okay, so this is our recommended board action, a lot going on here. So adopting the authorized, the authorizing resolution approving the issuance of the capital improvement, so this is for the not to exceed eighty million dollars, and we will need two separate motions and approval for the two separate resolutions, so the first one is the not to exceed eighty million.
We have a motion.
I move.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll just say with the flexibility we have, with the word changing the slide to may, I'm good.
Do we need a roll call?
No roll call vote, yeah?
Yep.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye.
And to item R thirty-three.
And so the recommended board action here is to adopt the supplemental resolution approving the competitive bids and approving the forms of the official notice of sale and summary notice of sale pertaining to such bonds.
So move.
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Okay, all right, both motions passed, I want to thank the team for doing a phenomenal job, I know we had a lot of questions out of the stuff, discussion, but I think the full dialogue was great for the board to hear it, and it gave me a lot of peace to, to go forward to, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we've got ten minutes, so we can go to miscellaneous business. Commissioner Oakley?
Oh, we are. Only thing good in ten minutes, but I'll try. All right, let's see, we got pictures up there. We had a meeting out on Bellamy Boulevard about the correction of a lot of safety issues and all on Bellamy, and, and all of us know how much traffic and all is caused from fifty-two on the Bellamy, and people driving through from Hernando County through Pasco to go into Tampa or other places, and they use that as a pass through. It came to our attention about a year and a half ago, we met on this, this project, and we addressed all the safety issues, passing and the roadway, narrow with shoulders having issues, and so we ended up having a meeting on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, Pete Hannigan and Pannos was there along with some other staff members. Let me tell you something, it's been a year and a half since we first met to come back and say, we're fixing to start this in twenty twenty-seven. This project will start in action. Also a person there was the guy that's gonna do the construction for Bellamy, we're gonna widen the shoulders, we're widening, I think it's roughly about two feet on both sides, and it'd be a lot of improvements, and some of the passing zones that are there now will go away because it's gonna be more safe without, without having that there, so we had this meeting in Ron Muck's barn right there on Bellamy Boulevard, and I can tell you, staff really reacted very well to come as quickly as they did within a year and a half to say, we're gonna do this in twenty twenty-seven, which is, our year is October twenty-sixth, so we're like a year away from, you're a little over a year from that starting. And at the same time this is starting, right before that, the widen of fifty-two will also start from Bellamy all the way to Erick Cut Off. And so there's a lot of construction that'll be happening out there, a lot of things we need, I mean, we have other developments coming, so it's very, very important this construction of these roadways get done right away because of all the development, more traffic coming. So this is a, a good way, a good example, where we're gonna get these roads in here right before we get some of the developments, which is gonna have the extra traffic, which we need to pay attention to.
Mind if I make a comment to that?
Yes.
And I've got, Jason was looking at the road, I think the road could be done better, and it makes sense to do that road in one smooth shot.
We made Chase a star out there.
All right, good. Are there improvements gonna be made at the intersection at fifty-two as well?
It's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we know there's those improvements.
I'm sure you're on top of it, sir.
Fifty-two at the intersection.
Okay.
And then the white, see, the widening of fifty-two's gonna start at the same time, so it's all hitting at the same time.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
And the gentleman that was doing the construction for the Bellamy, John Kilgore, he was there and spoke to the actual work that's gonna be done, and that work is starting at fifty-two, it goes all the way to the county line of Hernando County.
Awesome.
And then I heard someone spoke to me. Do what?
Hang on for a second, it's not done yet.
Somebody reached out to us, said that Hernando County was looking at improving their side. You want to speak?
Yeah, I do, sorry, I have to go in, and I'm gonna, I'm the speaker, first speaker at this presentation. My concern with the intersection of Bellamy and fifty-two is that the orange belt trail is coming right near there and possibly there, we don't know where it's gonna cross for sure yet, and so if you don't have mixed-use trail on either side of Bellamy, how, how is that gonna work? So I don't really know if the county has really looked, looked at that intersection well, because it's undetermined how we'll get across fifty-two in that area, and someone's got to look at it.
Well, part of that issue is, we're, we're doing the widening and the shoulder repair and all on Bellamy in the same right of way that it has now, and there's no room for, for a big wide trail. And that trail goes past there on down across, I think it goes underneath interstate on Old Pasco Road. There'll be other connections with development that's gonna come there.
And years, years ago, there was a big conversation about the underpass having a trail going under.
Right, and it's there, yeah. We're talking about the underpass to I seventy-five, where this trail will go through, I think.
Okay.
Okay, now we go on to the. We'll get you an answer. Okay. Next thing was the fire station, and we had a ribbon cutting, great new fire station. They don't have a pole for the firefighters to drop down to before they, they have elevator, it's so high, they have elevators and stairs, so very good presentation there, and, and the fact that we all welcome the better service we're gonna get in those areas when those stations open up, so it's a good project. Then I went and spoke to the class twenty-five oh four graduation ceremony for the firefighter class, and a lot of nice young men that, and women that are coming into our fire department that really are joining a very elite group of brotherhood and sisterhood in the fire department. Look forward to more and more of that. Then we had the, went to the, May twenty-ninth, went to the ribbon cutting of a, of a lab where they check, this is not where they go in and clear veins and things like that, this takes care of the electrical part of the heart. So Dr. Ahmad, he's, in that one picture, he's to the, to my right, but as you're looking at the picture on the left, he's the new doctor heading up that division for Advent Health there in Zephyr Hills. So here we go, next. Oh, this is the W R A C Technical College graduation, which I didn't realize we even had that, and it's not in our county, this is in Citrus County, and they brought the graduation here, and they had five individuals for detention, and they're very well-prepared and ready to go, very outstanding young, young men that are gonna take over in the detention part of our, our detention center, so it was a very good ceremony. Then went out to the RV, RV area at Lake, Lake Allo Road next to the interstate, and they're really coming together. It actually is gonna end up, I think it's three tiers, and there's a hotel element as part of the RV and all of that, which offers also extended living for people that come into the area, and it's very near Interstate seventy-five at exit two ninety-three, I believe, which is also my exit there on seventy-five, so they'll have some restaurants and a lot of activity there, they'll have, I think they'll have canoeing and things like that on the lake, so it's, it's gonna be a very nice project, so. And that finishes up the pictures, but then today, I heard a lot about, talking about rural area, equestrian, horses, things of this nature. The people that are talking about those kind of things, one of them would come to the northeast Pasco or in east Pasco County, and we're very rural, and I'm working very hard to, to keep it rural and, and have a very rural outlook on, on the northeast rural area and from Blanton North, and some areas to the south here, between here and, and Zephyr Hills will be, continue to be rural. But we can't make landowners sell to people and lower their price, and I mean, it's up to them to determine what they're gonna get for their land. But I offered to a, to a group on Trailberry Road at one time, a few years back, they didn't accept my vision for a very rural and equestrian rodeo arena and things of this nature, and a place where you could, you could actually ride horses, camp, go to Green Swamp and go back, that was my vision, but the property owner didn't want to sell to that vision, he wanted three and a half units an acre, which I told him no. And just lately, I've had other people that are doing other developments and, and around the west of Chapel area and all, they came out to Blanton Road near the intersection in a very rural area, and they wanted to put two and a half units an acre, and I told them no. So I'm, I'm trying to keep it very rural and very open to the peoples that we can have. When we get through, I don't know when that'll be, I won't be around, when they get through developing all Pasco County, there's at least a third of the county that will be open space, that will never be having all these forty and fifty-foot lots and things of that nature. We're gonna keep it very rural in that area, so I keep telling them that, but I'll just keep telling them that I'm gone, so, but, and that, that's all I have today.
No, you're doing great, sir, thank you. And I know it's tough to balance all that, so I appreciate what you're doing. And like I said, Marion and Connie, they are doing a great job up there, but we can't make people do what they want unless they want to do right in the business. Can't force it.
I mean, they sell their land, they own it, they can determine what they want to do with their land.
Okay.
It's just, they might have to do it somewhere else because we're not going to allow that to happen, we're going to keep it rural.
Okay. All right, it's past noon, we'll take a break for lunch, we'll be back at 1:30.
All right.
Any waterways and wildlife depend on you to keep them healthy. Excess fertilizer, grass clippings, trash, oils, and pet waste wash into gutters and storm drains when it rains. Stormwater carries these pollutants directly into our lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic animals. Storm drains are meant for clean rainwater, most other discharges are illegal. If you suspect an illicit discharge, please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.